Good evening. This is Tuesday, December 8th. Twenty twenty meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded. This video will be recorded for, I think it's a ten year stint, believe it or not. Confirming members access. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
I.
Timothy Wheeler.
Here.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Janet Campbell.
Here.
Tom Sanford here. We don't have any anticipated speakers on the agenda. The agenda is quite light for tonight, so I won't need to call anybody there. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty eight P M, Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty. This is the open meeting of the planning board. It is conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly, publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using a Zoom platform as posted on the agenda and will include links for the public to join in this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your microphone when the computer or your computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For the, for any re response, please wait until you've yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Done. So we have, like I said, we have a light agenda. There really wasn't anything in the mailbox and no one's called. I went through the mail. There really wasn't anything in the mail. There was a letter addressed to Jay from the National Grid and one to myself and National Grid. And Jay, before we dig any holes in the ground, we're supposed to call eight one one to have them come out to see that we're not disrupting any gas lines. If we smell gas, then we should call the fire department right away.
I never did.
What?
I never dig any holes in the ground, do you?
No, I didn't think you did. So other than that, I didn't bother sending that letter on. I just kind of recycled it for you.
And the odds of hitting gas in Berlin are, you know.
Very good if you live in this part of town.
Oh, really? You guys have gas over there?
Right there. In fact.
I don't have it.
I'll, 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 I'll tell a story if I may. We, we installed natural gas into Village Power. And shortly thereafter, it was winter. Ice came off the roof and broke the diaphragm off of the meter.
Graduator, oh yeah.
So it was a direct link to the street and I woke up at three o'clock and heard.
Oh, no.
Oh my God. So I went, I went downstairs and looked out of my window from the, in, at Village Power and realized that the gas was leaking all over the neighborhood. So I went up and said to Janet, we've got to get the hell out of the house, which we did. And I went over here to the big house and I called the fire department and then I called EverSource and they said, oh, good. We'll be there in about an hour and a half. So fortunately, Henry Pacific had hitched me up and he heard on the scanner at three A M. in the morning that there was a gas leak at Village Power. And he thought, oh my God, what have I done wrong? So he, I came out of the house shortly after I called everybody. The fire department was just arriving. The police had brought it off the street. And as I walked down toward Village Power in the dark, I couldn't hear any sound and I thought, oh, what have I done? I've called everybody out and there's not a problem evidently. And as I got closer to Village Power, a form came away from the building and it was Henry Pacific and he'd gone over and he knew what to do to shut it down from the street. So we did it.
Wow.
But um.
And that's why we don't have gas.
Yeah. Well, I got a lot of gas lines at the farm, but I don't think Barry's guy ever told any about them, anybody about where they are.
So do you know where they are?
Pretty much.
When you dig them up, you will.
Yeah.
That's why you need to call eight one one.
That's right.
Write it right on the side of your tractor.
I dug up a wire underground, like a big wire one day. And over the last few years, I've realized it goes all the way from Spring House where Brewer hits Central Street all the way up the hill to my house, to the barn.
Wow.
A mile long. And I'll, I'll dig all over the farm and every once in a while I'll hit the wire. It's like, oh, wow. I guess I'm in the line between the barn and the spring house. There's a lot of stuff buried in this town.
Do you know what, what it?
Oh, there are a lot of stuff.
We don't talk about the bodies, though.
Well, my favorite was, was when I was just about done with Lowe's house and I dug up a pickup truck. Still had one tire on it.
Do you want a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting?
Well, you guys all read them, right?
Good. I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion to accept in the meeting minutes as recorded from the planning board meeting eleven seventeen, twenty twenty? Hearing nothing, I will ask you for a vote and it will be by roll call. Jay Teach.
Absolutely.
Tim Wheeler.
Yes.
Carolyn.
Yep.
Janet.
Yep.
Tom, yes. The minutes are accepted unanimously. Thank you. So Timothy, can you give us a, a quick update on what you sent around today by email? I don't know if everybody got it or not. About the West Street.
Two hundred to three hundred thousand square feet.
West Street or?
River Road.
River Road.
Uh, River, I'm sorry, River Road West.
So Paul Johnson is, was from the area, but he lives in Georgia now. He's a realtor. He's worked on a number of properties that belong to Trotias, Worcester Sand. And this is one of the properties that they have. It's that River Road site that Steve Vina Casa was looking at for the possible over fifty five. And every so often he'll call and say, I've got somebody that's interested in the property. And they've got quite a big sign down there now, actually. Out front. And so today he, he sent me an email and then a short while later he called and said, can we talk? And I said, yeah, you know, it's, and he said, have you opened the stuff I sent? And I said, no, not yet. So I did while we were talking and I thought, wow. So what he sent was four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space superimposed on that landscape. And he's saying that it would only be two hundred and fifty thousand. But it would require rezoning. That's not a use that's allowed in the limited industrial zone. So he just said, you know, is, is there any interest on the part of the town? And if there's not, you know, I'll go and look for some other possibilities. And I said the, I'd, I'd let the planning board know that he was interested in our review and that, but that it wasn't on our agenda, so we wouldn't take any legitimate action at this point. That we might put it on the agenda for the January meeting and he monitors what's on our agenda, so he would probably like to participate if we wanted to throw some ideas around with him. He's, he wants to understand what the possibilities would be and if we, we have any interest in making modifications to that parcel through some zoning changes that might allow some additional uses beyond what's allowed right now. So, you know, he, he'd be happy to talk to us. And I said, I'd ask and see if people had an interest in chatting with him in January, so.
Building for that site.
That's a huge building, although what he said was, uh, it's about, well, if it was, if it was two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, it would be, you know, five acres of building on a twenty eight acre parcel, so.
What are they gonna do?
When he looks at green space ratios and stuff like that, he, he, he says, you know, it's not really that big compared to what potentially could be built there if you maxed out the, the space. It's not a lot of wetlands issues on that site. It's.
No. No, the biggest thing about a warehouse that size, you know, it, it's, you automatically think like Amazon distribution or something is just the truck traffic.
Yeah.
Over that little bridge. Through town on River Road, through Hudson, through, you know, it just that, as far as I'm concerned, is the biggest issue.
Oh, yeah.
He can, he can, he can, once he gets the on-ramp onto four ninety five through the state, then we can talk to us.
Sure. There you go. The flyover.
Right.
They gotta clean up that intersection at two ninety anyways. Maybe they could do it all at once.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a proposal for something similar to that. Essentially, um, in, well, in North Borough down by Trumbettas on Route twenty. There's a whole big save something, save our town.
By Trumbettas little ice cream stand?
Yep.
On Bartlett Street?
Yeah, actually, yes.
Their warehouse is already down there.
Right, but this is, I think, um, maybe it is on that side of Bartlett. But, um, and there's a whole neighborhood group that's trying to put the kibosh on that. So I think, you know, with, with the explosion of home shopping and the need for distribution centers, I think every, I think everybody's just kind of poking around to see where is the easy path of least resistance.
Yeah.
Well, the interesting thing about this is it's a former sand pit, so the, the site work is minimal.
Right, yeah. I mean, the site itself, it's more just getting to and from.
Right.
Would be my concern.
Right.
It would come out right over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, slant on grade, tilt up construction, they could have a building up in no time.
Right.
The I think what people have begun to talk about is the fact that when it was zoned limited business, almost all the residential activity in that neck of the woods wasn't there. There was seventeen ninety Farm and Tyler's.
Right.
That was it. I mean, and Joe Davis's house between seventeen ninety and where Delaney used to be that Larry Wheeler picked up. So, I mean, they're basically those three farms and the rest of that whole stretch was just wide open.
Right.
So now it's, if you really look at the number of residential units between, you know, Brook Lane and everything that's on River Road and stuff, it's, it's a much different environment. And so it's probably appropriate for us to to look at that remaining piece because so many of the other pieces that was on limited industrial. You know, Brook Lane became that project and Boundless Adventures is on, on the back part of that other piece. And it's just Worcester Sand that's sitting there in the midst of things, so.
Was Brook Lane an overlay or is it actual zoning change, right?
It was an overlay, but it, we created the overlay to as a result of their coming in and talking to us about the possibility of developing an over fifty five. So we didn't have that vehicle before they showed up.
Right.
So it, it may be appropriate to just explore with this guy other options beside limited business too. I mean, it uh, more limited, yeah, it's limited business. It's not limited industrial. So you know, he, he would prefer us to move in the direction of you know, more industrial uses and I don't think necessarily it's an appetite in town for that, so. You know.
Right. I mean, low impact industrial Monday through Friday, nine to five might not be it, it would probably be an easier sell than the amount of residential you could get in there.
I think the traffic situation is always going to be. I know, I know, there.
Marijuana grow facility.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Talking some of you. Was complaining about the smell.
Yeah.
Who?
Yeah.
That lady that was, um, over in, where was she? Over by Gates, someplace around there. She was saying that the smell was going to be drifting across the four ninety five corridor to her back property and was going to be problematic for her.
Yeah.
Is she on this board?
What? She'd be so high all day, she wouldn't even notice.
The smell is brutal.
I've heard, yeah.
When Glenn and I went to Colorado two years ago now and we're driving back from Mesa Verde to Colorado Springs and it's dark. I mean, it makes Berlin look like the city at the, out there in the middle of nowhere at night. And it was dark, dark, dark. And all of a sudden we're like, what's that smell? And there was just this skunky odor. And then like a mile later, we came across a grow facility and I was like, wow, that was the smell was pretty bad, but there's got to be a way to mitigate that.
Well, the, the guys that were in from, um, the, you know, on the cane piece, they were saying that they have scrubbers and stuff like that, so.
Right.
They didn't seem to think that it was going to be an issue at all.
Right.
But, um, somebody was putting her up to that. Somebody that we all know and.
Oh, okay.
So they were putting her up to that because she, she didn't really know what she was really talking about. Um, but she was making a big play and she was using words that were definitely fed. Uh, to, to say that she was having, she would have an issue with it. So I would think you'd have more issue, she would have more issue with the noise from four ninety five than she would from the odor of the grow facility that was located probably a quarter, half a mile away from her.
Yeah.
Whatever.
So do you, do you want me to tell this gentleman we'll listen to his? Is that all right? What, eight o'clock? Okay. I'll get back to you and let you know for sure that he wants to anticipate, but.
Okay.
Probably wouldn't be too many new kids in school if they put that in, huh? Maybe the night watchman's kids. Does anyone know how the?
One twelve.
Okay.
Sorry, Jay, I didn't mean to cut you off.
What's the address there? What's, oops, what's the, um, address of that property?
Is there a number? It's gotta be.
What?
There's gotta be a number, right?
Yeah.
Just use Worcester Sand and Gravel.
It, I think spooky world may, well, spooky world's.
Spooky world's a hun- one hundred.
Yeah, so it may be like one fifty or something like that. It's an even number.
So if we were to consider changing the zoning there, would we extend it all the way down the street to include this, the Tyler property?
Well, Tyler's own commercial village.
Oh, and it's not limited business?
No, and then the front, the front of the Boundless Adventure parcel is zoned residential because
Right.
Danny Tyler didn't want the frontage on his property to be rezoned. And so that's why that slivers there.
Okay.
And then Boundless is zoned limited business, as is Worcester Sand.
Right.
And the area that, um, Brooke, you know, the Brook Lane site is, was zoned limited business. And then it's limited business all the way to the Hudson line through Gillis and Organimation.
Right.
And that extends all the way back.
Pretty deep.
Yeah, close to Gates Pond, actually.
Right, because that includes that, that's Ent whistle up there, right?
Behind it.
But, yeah, right, where the canes were looking for back there, yep.
Right.
You want updates on anything else?
Sure. Yeah, what happened on the, uh, call last night?
So we had about thirty participants at the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee's hearing in regard to the, that, that test, you know, the modifications to the center and, and I was, I was pleased. I mean, people had, it went on for about an hour and a half. I think the hearing probably took an hour and fifteen minutes. We had a little bit of business afterwards, but a lot of participation and a lot of good thoughts. In general, a willingness to, you know, think about some of the changes that might take place, but a realization that it, what we experimented with wasn't perfect. I think some folks were concerned that the town was just going to move right into making the modifications and I, I, you know, the chief tried to assure people that this was just a a pilot to experiment and see what the impacts would be. But, um, I think one of the big issues that came out was that if, if you're driving a, a truck and you want to park so you can go to the store, you traditionally you've used that stretch along Carter that heads toward the store alongside the church. And the way the traffic is configured this way, you can't do that anymore. So that was a hardship for folks and I, I think in general, a lot of folks felt that making Carter one way wasn't as productive. But making wooded avenue one way probably still made some sense. And I think Barry Agers, you know, his feeling was make it one way from, uh, the library back to sixty two. I think that the, the majority of folks, I think, looked at that as the logical solution. I think some folks saw that as, uh, it ought to be reversed and go the other way. But I mean, of course, what that would mean is you might very well be able to create a little more parking if it was just a one lane road through there and, and that's some of the folks, because of the way this was set up and it couldn't include traffic, I mean, parking is, is one of the experimental features. I think a lot of folks looked at this and said, the way the barriers are set up and the way the traffic is routed and stuff, you, you've lost traffic. If you've lost parking spaces instead of gained them and that's, that's certainly not the plan for a, a final design and, and so, you know, people talked about that. They talked about speed in general coming out of Bolton on Highland Street down through Cardville. And, um, later in the meeting, after the hearing was over, there was a, a, a discussion on the part of the committee about the possibility of putting a stop sign on the, on Highland Street coming north and south by Randall. Just to get people to begin to think about slowing down and then to do that again where Carter takes the left toward Wheeler's Garage and St. Joe's. So there'd be a stop sign on Highland and on Carter, so we would have to stop there.
It's the only stop sign I never stopped for, the one on, on the end of Randall. See cars coming from a mile away.
Mile away. So, um, the, the chief and the highway superintendent are going to look into that and maybe we'll run an experiment with that sometime in the spring when the snows are gone. Just to get an idea whether that would have any positive impact on, on, uh, Cardville. People talked about sidewalks. Some people said, well, you know, you've got sidewalks in some good locations already, you know. Why not work on the ones that are there that aren't functional, like the one through Cardville? People were supportive of a, a sidewalk that would go from the store to the bank. And of course, if you continued that, you'd be able to get down onto the town property on the corner of Pleasant and sixty two, so that met with approval. People liked the notion of having the pedestrian signage, the blinking signs, although they felt that people would become immune to them after time if they're blinking all the time. So they talked about the possibility of putting up signs that you'd punch and they light up when you wanted to cross instead of just blinking all the time.
You know, you know, the kind of thing that comes when they're coming on the trail in Marlboro past the, uh, on, on Fitchburg Street? Those walk signs, those come on automatically as the people approach, walking, riding a bicycle.
Yeah.
And they start blinking yellow down.
Yeah, so they, they talked about that and they also talked about those small little, you know, eighteen inch by eighteen inch speed signs that are being put on posts that reflect what your speed is as you approach and Margaret and, and the chief have been looking into the possibility of acquiring a couple of those. So with the grant money, they, they, they bought these barriers that they can use in other places on other occasions and they bought the picnic tables and they bought those blinking pedestrian signs. So they were able to acquire some equipment that they'll be able to continue to use in the future. Um, so on the, um, town's website, it, they're going to post all the comments, but comments I thought were great. I mean, people really put a lot of thought into what they thought the, the pros and cons were and in general, I think people said, you know, there's room for opportunity to make some changes here, but what they, what we did in this particular instance wasn't entirely satisfactory. So, you know, react from that and learn from it and, and move forward. So it was good.
This was someone from out of town who noticed that at night when you come down Woodward and stop to turn, your headlights are going right into, I think it's Jane Sawyer's house. Is that whose house that is in front of there?
Right across the street?
Yeah.
It's one of the houses that she rents, yeah.
Oh, she rents, huh?
The little cape.
Nobody's complained about that, huh? Probably not that many cars at night, I guess.
Well, I used to sit in Joni Bergen's living room when she lived in the old town hall. It's next to the graveyard and I can remember sitting there eating dinner and thinking, I need to get out of here because the cars were coming. I mean, they're at the height above the house, looking in your windows. I mean, they're at the height above the house, looking in your windows, coming around that corner and it was. You, you were gonna end up, you know, having to vacate quick as far as I was concerned, she assured me there was no problem.
Somebody did hit a house on Central Street, I saw her on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
On Saturday. During. It, so which house was it?
I think it's the one just beyond Brewer coming towards town.
Okay, a little one right next to the road.
Yeah. Wow.
Yep, no one was hurt, but definitely the house was hit.
Yep, crazy.
Yep.
Um, I, I contacted Elizabeth. Um, Potash is her name, she's the manager at, at Riverbridge. Um, what do we call it?
The Rockwell?
Rockwell. Uh, fifty-five percent of the units are occupied and sixty-two percent have been leased um, at this point.
The whole complex?
Of the whole, yeah.
Wow.
And how much is built?
Things are sort of slowed down now, which you'd expect and they'll pick up again in the spring, but. Um, she's, she says she's pleased and uh. I hadn't gotten any additional school age kids numbers, but when I talked to the principal. When they were about fifty percent. Um, they only, he said he only had two kids in the school system from there and both of them had already been in the system and just had moved down there, so. There's a lot of younger kids, maybe fifteen to twenty that are preschool, but um. You know, they'll, some of those will migrate up over time. But pretty minimal impact at, at that number, so.
Do you know what percentage is built?
Everything's built.
Oh, they're done?
They're done.
Nice.
Workers ain't there anymore.
If you go on the website, it lists about forty. Forty-two or forty-three units that are still available, which doesn't match up with the sixty-two percent leased, but. Um, I was looking at it and you can click on one bedroom, two bedroom. Um, first floor, second floor, third floor, and it gives you a number of available units on each level and by bedroom number, so. Um, it was interesting. You know, if you get a chance, you know, look at that because uh. They give the square footage of each unit, the, the, the rental fee for each unit, you can click on units that are available and it'll tell you. And it was interesting to see the, the first floor units um, closest to the street were pretty well gone.
Well.
And the upper floor units on some of the back. Projects were, were um, pretty filled up too. So it was, you know, it was good. Notice how the uh, the one bedroom, one bedroom units have a. Another quote unquote bedroom and the two bedroom units have another. It's a shared bath, I think the only thing that's missing is a closet. Yeah. I mean, fairly, you know, recently big too, so. Surprised there's not more kids taking advantage of that. Yeah, we'll see what happens over time. Has there been a lot of traffic on the uh, river, on the? So far? With all the people that are kayaking up and down from the. Ice, ice skating? You know, I drove, I drove around through there um, a couple of days ago and. The, the Brook is not that far away actually, um. I was surprised, it, it was closer, you know, we, we joked about those aerial views of the, you know, the proposal and. How close they made that look, but uh, it is actually pretty close. I talked to Chris Senney today. Cuz I think he's having a meeting tonight with. Margaret and Chris Keith and uh. Stan Rogalinski maybe, I don't know, there may be another person involved, they're, they're just talking about. Payments and, you know, s- stuff like that because that hundred thousand, of course. Um, came due November first, so. I think they're, they're, they're present, currently having a discussion about that. Carolyn, did you get all those trees, did you tell them those trees had to grow really fast or we're gonna shut off their electricity?
Grow those trees.
Yeah. That's all I have, I think. We need a couple more things for the minutes here, guys, it's gonna be less than a page. Well, okay, so what, Carolyn and I can ask you one, the, the, the Community Preservation Act Committee. Met um, a week or two ago, when do we meet?
Last week.
Last week. And um. One of the charges for the committee is to create a, a community preservation plan. They're, they're fairly standardized, we've looked at a number of other towns, they're about, some are twenty, twenty-five, thirty pages, some are up to forty, but. And they're divided into um, sort of a generalized, you know, comment about the role of the, of the, the act and all this sort of stuff and then there's. Um, a little more specific language that deals with um, historic preservation, housing and. Open space and recreation, so because the committee's made up of people that represent those interests. We've asked different members to work on sort of an outline of what might be included in their section. And then our goal is to meet with different committees in town. You know, so we meet with you guys and conservation and housing partnership and et cetera, et cetera, so. In, in January, after our next meeting, early in the month, we'll probably begin to reach out to. Different committees to have some dialogue about what they consider to be some of the priorities for the. Town to, to look into, the way it looks now, I mean, I, you're probably familiar, so. Ten percent has to go to housing, ten percent has to go to open space and recreation, ten percent goes to um.
Historical.
Historical and, and then the seventy percent. Um, can, can be divided up in multiple ways, it can go all in one direction or in a given year or, or, you know, be split up. And you can hold it in reserve, um, and indeed you can hold the ten percent in reserve in separate accounts that are. Designated for housing or whatever, so over time you could, you could generate a pool of money that could go towards some bigger project if you wanted to. Um, and the committee's role is to set up um, this plan that sort of outlines some of the overarching objectives. But then also to look at the mechanism that we'd use for people applying um, to access some of these funds. And um, the whole procedure that we then use as a committee to make recommendations to the town meeting because. The town meeting can only act upon the recommendation of the committee.
And the committee can only recommend.
And the committee can only recommend, we can't expend, well, we can expend a small amount for administrative purposes, so. You know, publicizing hearings or hiring a consultant to help with an appraisal on a parcel, that sort of thing. But the committee can't expend, it can only recommend and it's town meeting action that has to uh. Take action and, and uh, make that final decision. Um, so in Berlin's case, um, the three percent. They're. What, what we went through a training session, the gentleman that did the training said that. Of the towns that have accepted um, the Community Preservation Act over the last. You know, ten or fifteen years, maybe even longer than that, there's only been about, um, there's less than ten that have gone to the three percent figure. In the beginning, a number of towns went to three percent because the state match was. A hundred percent way back in the beginning and then gradually as more towns came on, that amount was reduced. And it became, uh, I think for towns that got involved later on, a little more difficult to go for the three percent. By going for three percent, um, we put ourselves in a situation where we get three rounds of match from the state. Instead of just one. So internally, we, in this fiscal year, we've, or the one that's just passed, cuz it's just been certified. The state, when we met, actually, it just announced the figures, so two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Is the amount that we raised internally as a result of the three percent. And the state in the three rounds is gonna match somewhere around a hundred and ninety thousand. So the, the sum that'll be available is close to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, for that one year, so it fluctuates based on a number of factors, obviously, but um.
But he did say that we had, could count that, that, that would be a good.
Yeah.
Target for us to use unless the real estate market tanks.
Right.
Because the money from the state comes from a fee that's collected at the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
So everything that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The, I think he said fifty dollars.
Yeah, there was some set fee.
Right, uh, gets put into the CPA fund. So right now, the CPA fund is flush because everything's, real estate's going bananas, but um.
So Berlin will have more money in its CPA fund from. Last year. Than Hudson. Or Northborough, because both of them are at one percent.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And they don't get those extra matches, so.
Right, I think we got like an extra eighty thousand dollars or something in those second two rounds.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I was a little surprised, I. I didn't anticipate that level of funding for this, so. But that'll, so we'll be in touch about being on the agenda to. I, I don't think the whole committee will meet, I think maybe two members from the committee will go out and. Reach out to each of the various committees in town, that way we don't have to call our own meeting, we can just be participants in the committee meetings of other groups, so. So that's something to look forward to.
Definitely.
Is that enough for your minutes, Jay? Yep, absolutely. Hell, it's eight twenty, look, I mean. I've took every word and then, you know, added, and kind of embellished it, so it'd be more interesting to read. Stuff about your cat and that kind of stuff. Good.
Eight of minutes.
Uh, Tom, do you see Eloise has her hand raised?
I don't see that.
Oh, Eloise has her hand raised, I assume she would like to speak.
Then I'm more than happy to call on Eloise, can you elevate her?
Uh, yep, she's elevated.
Okay, I just want to let you know that as elected officials. We have to sign once a year and it has to be completed by January twentieth. Um, our name, our address, the um. Office we're in. And it's, the whole purpose is to make sure that you don't have private bank accounts as elected officials. For election. But I am required to put it on the town's website for a minimum of seven years. But we, people aren't going in, I wanted to let you know, it will be in your mailbox as of tomorrow, so if you can. Circulate it among yourselves or let yourselves know, you know, so that who can go in and sign.
Can we go in and sign it?
No.
Yeah, you can, if, if, if I'm working. You can come in and you come into the um, entryway and then you have to call up and I have to go down and get you.
You have to yell up the stairs.
Document down, you could sign it downstairs and then we'll call it.
And I just get it out of the mailbox and circulate it around.
Well, I didn't meet you the last time, so. Remember, we never met up?
Right, can you, can you send that to us electronically and we can just fill it out?
I was trying to keep it down to three pieces of paper as opposed to, you know, I've got twenty.
I'll go in, I'll go in tomorrow, are you in there tomorrow?
I'm in there tomorrow night and I'm in there Thursday, uh, James will be in Thursday. Uh, eleven to two.
What time?
Eleven to two.
Cause uh. I can go and sign it Thursday morning, right there.
Okay, thank you. But I'm trying to give you notice, it has to be done at, at minimum between Ja- January one and January twentieth, but. Since the world's crazy, I thought I'd let you know.
And, and do we go to jail if we don't do it?
Eloise does, you wanna send Eloise to jail?
Some days that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Three squares and a cot, that's all you gotta worry about.
You know, it's a small area, they feed you, it's warm.
Right, they do your laundry.
Wanted to say that, thank you.
To Eloise.
Okay, so should I entertain a motion to um, call this shindig to a close?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close this hearing at eight twenty-three PM. Any further discussion?
Oh, when's our next meeting?
Uh, it's the twelfth of January.
Okay, so it is, alright.
Twenty twenty-one.
Bye-bye twenty twenty.
Thank goodness. Yeah, get over fast enough.
Yeah.
So I need to take a roll call vote, uh, Jay Teach.
Hi.
Tim Wheeler.
Hi.
Caroline.
Hi.
Janet.
Hi.
Tom, hi.